2011, and I'll get onto the right forum here, not with my executive session. It's, um, I, uh, would you please join me in the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our Metro Council representative, Councillor Calata, Coletta is going to give us a, an update from Metro. This is their second meeting.
Of the day, you mean.
Within the last, well, the second, second meeting here before is within the last two hours, yes.
Well, and thank you again, it's always a pleasure to be here, Mayor Neely and members of the council. I want to give you the update on where we are in the region these days and a couple of things that aren't in the presentation that I just wanted to mention that came across my desk just as I was leaving. One is that every year we get a review from the Natural Areas Bond Oversight Committee, and that review just came out today, and so it will be up on our website. I didn't have a chance to read it, but it essentially tells the story of what we've acquired across the region with the natural areas bond measure money that the voters approved, and, and what, kind of what we've acquired, who's been involved, where the sites are, how they're being utilized, and what's the condition of them. Some of them are in different stages of restoration or being made into parks. So I would encourage you, if you're interested in the bond measure and how we're spending that money, to take a look at that site, that report that's on our site. The other side, report that's coming out, it's, I just got it in a draft today, but that I think is, if anything, even more important, and that is that we have partnered with park providers around the region and watershed councils and others in this organization called the Intertwine that I've spoken with you about before. One of the first big products of that organization is a regional conservation strategy, and there will be two parts to it. The first part is now in a draft, I'm reviewing it now and will be releasing it, but it really takes, it's the first time we've looked regionally at what are the natural resources in our region, what's their condition. When we go to, for example, the federal government and ask for money to support rehab work in our parks or in our natural areas, we don't really have a strategy or a status report or anything that we can sit down and talk with them about. Now we do, and we have it in a draft form, we'll be releasing it soon. Coupled with that will be a bioregional atlas, an atlas of what are the species in our region, how, what's their condition, what's their status, what are our priorities, who are we losing, who are we rescuing? So both of those also will be available on our website as soon as they're completed, but I wanted to let you know, because I personally am very excited about these, when I've gone back to DC and tried to get money for parks or for natural areas or for preservation work, conservation work, we always hear, well, what's your strategy, where are you in your process, and we kind of cobble something together. Now we'll be able to hand over a real strategy from the entire region, and that is huge. That's, that's a massive undertaking, and our staff has worked with a lot of other staff to do that. Let me get to the, what I had planned to say tonight before I saw those, and I'll, I'll cover these issues as we, as I move along. The first one is that earlier this year, we did, as all the entities, the jurisdictions have to do redistricting as populated, in response to the 2010 census, District Two actually had some of the slowest population growth, District Four in Washington County had the fastest population growth, and so in order to keep the district's population numbers balanced at around 250, 257,000 people per district, I got Happy Valley. And so, starting in 2013, I will have eight cities and, and part of southwest Portland, which I think that makes me now the star, I think I now have more, more jurisdictions that I work with than anybody else on the council. I'm very excited.
Do you get more votes?
More votes?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, always, we'll see.
They don't weigh your votes by the number of municipalities?
Of people, no, no, they don't. But they're, but there's an equal number of voters now in each, or at least a number of citizens in each district, people heads in each district. I also got the area south of 205 that's part of the Stafford area, the Stafford watershed, and that was formerly in, I think, District Three, Carl Hostica's district, so I now have the entire Stafford watershed area. We also kicked off a campaign this year that I, I put grocery bags on your table, and there are more in the back for anyone who wants to take one. We kept, you know, I mentioned earlier the natural areas, and we, we did a little survey and found out that most people don't know about all the natural resources we have, and the metro, just metro alone has around 12,000 acres of open spaces, natural areas, parks, golf clubs, things like that, and people didn't know about them. So we kicked off a campaign, we visited all the farmers markets in the region and gave away these bags, gave away little pins like this, there's some more in the back, and there were a couple of radio ads, and you might have seen a TV ad here and there, small, just little public service announcements, just saying, "It's yours, we bought it for you with your money, the voters paid for this land, go out and experience it." And you can go to our website and see where these parks are, they are all over the region, and we'll get to one of the most spectacular ones here, this, in Oregon City. We also awarded $1.6 million in natural area, nature and neighborhood grants this year, one in Milwaukee at Kleinpoint Overlook to begin the construction of the Riverfront Park there, one, and these are just the ones in my district, one at Boardman Creek in Oak Grove, and one that you are probably familiar with up at the Clackamas Community College Camp, Campus, the Inkscape Environmental Learning Center, got a $10,000 grant to, in some ways, maintain that site. I, I think we really are not maximizing its potential, I think we have, we could make much better use of that site. And, and I say that both as a Metro councillor and as a board member of the Clackamas Community College Board of Directors, so I really want to see that site utilized. I had nothing to do with them getting the grant, by the way, so it's, it's all done by our oversight committee, so. And there's more information on the website, actually, about those. We did purchase a number of parcels of land in District Two this year, and again, I'm extremely excited. As you cross the Selwood Bridge, you'll see in front of you is the Riverview Cemetery. To the left of that is a large parcel of land that we purchased with the city of Portland, and that will be kept as wildlife habitat and very likely, we haven't really worked out all the details, but very likely there might be some trails going through that, because if you look at this from, if you go to like Google Maps and, or Google Earth, you now will be able to have almost contiguous green space and habitat connectivity from Tryon Creek through Lewis and Clark Campus, through this site, through the cemetery, almost all the way to Forest Park. It's really amazing when you look at how much green there is across that side of the region, now that ridge is, is going to be mostly natural areas, or enough connectivity so that, Lord help us, we all have deer in our gardens. I'm experiencing that now I live on Johnson Creek, and, oh, it's so nice having that lovely habitat, because the deer are now back after almost 50 years of not having deer.
And it is great, I've got skunks in my backyard.
Yeah, I've got beavers, beavers in my backyard. Yeah. We also purchased 100 acres of the Boy Scout camp up on Scouter Mountain, some of you may have been at some of the celebrations we had in the last month or so up there, that was really exciting. But I think the area that's most exciting to you, and frankly, to me, is the Willamette Narrows Kanema Bluff. We have almost, maybe more than doubled our land holding there this year, we purchased another 181 acres. It's, it's such an amazing place, and, I mean, I don't need to tell you, this is totally a spectacular site for Oregon City, and we're very happy to be partnering with you to try to maintain that place for the citizens. Again, when we buy this land, this is saying that we will protect it forever, and it's just such a, such a privilege that the voters of the region have given us two opportunities now, around more than 300 million, almost $400 million to buy land to protect it. There's also land purchased in the Columbia Sewell and the East Futes, but that's not in my district, so. I'm not greedy, but I really like those numbers. We're also looking at another site that's obviously really important to you, is the Willamette Falls, formerly known as the Blue Heron Site. Where, it, we, because the Willamette River is one of our priority sites, we could purchase some of that land with the natural areas bond money, and so we are looking at it, we're daunted, frankly, by the challenge of it, but we're gathering information, we're trying to develop partnerships with yourselves and others around the region to see if there isn't a way that we could move forward to secure that site. One of my favorite projects, the Columbia River Crossing, we are facing our, hopefully, final decision on that tomorrow. You may have heard that we bifurcated the last decision, Metro is the last decision-maker on this project, until it starts going to everybody who has to actually fork over the money, then we'll have the legislatures voting and a number of other entities voting to approve the dollars for it. But we had to approve the land use final order, which cleared the way for the light rail portion of the project and what's known as related highway projects, which happened to be 2/3 of the cost of the overall project. So we did approve that, but in making that decision, we decided to postpone the decision about the final environmental impact study, and that we will be making tomorrow. We had some real concerns about whether the community would be protected and held whole, particularly around Hayden Island, North Portland, and we have been negotiating with the project sponsors and others to make sure that we can have some form of mitigation and enhancement beyond what's kind of the, the minimum requirement. We want to make sure that the citizens are protected, that their community is actually enhanced. So we are, we've been talking with the Columbia River Crossing team, and we will be voting We also are facing, one of the biggest decisions that the Metro Council faces is the urban growth boundary decision. Every five years, we look at how much land we may need in the region as our population is growing and our employment needs are growing. We've identified a need for a broad range, based on how fast the region might grow, but we've kind of targeted it down at, we might need around 15,000 new dwelling units in the next 20 years, plus about 310 acres of large lot industrial land. We're happy to be able to say that the Land Conservation Development Commission did approve the, the last piece of the urban reserves process that we negotiated with Washington County, LCDC approved that. So we don't have to look at Oregon City, for example, as an urban growth expansion area, we can look at the areas that are in the urban reserves that have really come forward and said, "We want to be expanding our areas," and that's, the two major ones are South Hillsborough and also South Cooper Mountain, that would be annexed to Beaverton. So those are the two we're looking at, we're looking at a parcel of land north of Hillsborough for the industrial piece. Frankly, when we asked the communities, "Did you have land that you wanted us to study for this industrial parcel?", North Hillsborough was the only piece that came forward, so that's why they're on the, we'll be studying them. We'll be having a series of public hearings starting in October. Since we kicked off this process, Wilsonville has also come in and said they want us to study, or actually include in the UGB expansion, a parcel of land outside Wilsonville. Sherwood has come in, Tigard has come in, so we may be holding more hearings than just this one in, in, on the west side. My guess is if we do decide to consider the Wilsonville and Sherwood request, we'll hold a hearing there as well. And we find, make our final decision October 20th. Couple of high-capacity transit reports. One, you probably know, we broke ground for the Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail Bridge in June. What you may not know is we were just recognized nationally with an award for the quality of our environmental impact study and the work that's gone into the project to date. So we will be, actually, I don't know who, but somebody probably who wrote the thing will be going to New Orleans for a national convention to receive this national recognition. It's, it's really quite an honor, and the best part of it, I think, is that it bodes well for our getting the, the funding from the feds. They, they have essentially committed to funding half of this project, $750 million, but we're not comfortable until the check is written in, in the bank. So getting this recognition for the project was huge. We have all agreed to hold off on further decisions about the Lake Oswego, Portland Lake Oswego Streetcar Project until the citizens in Lake Oswego vote, and that was at the request of Mayor Jack Hoffman, and we, we all recognize that that's, that's a big controversial project for that city to deal with, and we don't want to get in their way. That will probably be early next year. Regional flexible funds, this is for the 2014, 2015 allocation of dollars. We anticipate having somewhere around $25 million to distribute locally to projects. We took a very different approach this time, we asked the counties to come in with their, not their wish list, but the projects they want funded, and we, we essentially assigned a dollar amount based on population distribution. Clackamas County, I think, had $3 million, and said, and we, we gave them the direction, which came from the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, that we wanted you to focus on a pedestrian bike project for the majority of the money, and maybe a green economy or freight project. What this county recommended was a multi-use regional trail connection from the Selwood, I mean, from the Sunrise Corridor to the Trolley Trail in Milwaukee at 17th. If you've ever bicycled it, you'll know, it's the most hair-raising part of that, of either ride, so that got the county nod, and also a, what's called intelligent transportation system, essentially a high-tech freight signaling project for the area around Oregon Ironworks in what's called the Clackamas Industrial Area. Those are the two projects that were recommended by Clackamas County. There will be public hearing, a public hearing on it, but the purpose of the hearing is really to have people come in and say, "We think you could improve this project by doing X, Y, and Z," not, "We don't want that project, we want this one instead." We're really trusting that the counties are bringing us the projects they want, and if we can get the money from the federal government, which is the big IF here, there is a huge question with federal funding about whether we will get any regional flexible funds. If we, if, if what happens, which, what is now in the Transportation Committee's plan for reauthorization, flexible funds would be cut almost to the bone, so this would all go out the door. But we have our fingers crossed that we will continue to get regional flexible funds for transportation projects all across the United States, but certainly in this region. If we do, we will be making a decision, we'll be making the decision anyway, we always have to hope for the best, so we'll be making a decision December 15th. Metro's been working very closely with the Port of Portland, the Portland Business Alliance, the, I do not know what this acronym stands for, my apologies, I know it is industrial land uner, users of some sort, and also Business Oregon, to, to survey brownfields around the region that are inside the urban growth boundary, that we could redevelop, clean up, and create as new employment areas. We are hoping to find five or 10 sites that we, that are ready, that we know what we could do with them, and we think the state will help support the work on that, we've been given some nods from the state. So that plan will be completed in October, and we hope to be able to move forward on it in the next year. We have new kittens at our zoo, and if you haven't seen them, you really need to get up there, they, I think they're on public display as of this weekend, I got to go up this, on Friday and get a behind-the-scenes view. The caracal cats are those, those cats that have the really tall ears, and what's amazing about caracal kittens is their ears are full-grown when they're born. So you have these teeny little kittens with these beautiful, huge ears, and they're, they're truly just like kittens, they're just, they just frolic, they're just beautiful, we're very proud and excited about our babies. We're also giving the Schnitzer Concert Hall a facelift, you'll be seeing that.
Is that owned by Metro?
Pardon?
Does Schnitzer Concert Hall own Metro?
We operate all of the Portland Performing Arts Centers, Keller Hall, the Schnitzer, the, the performance spaces across, we operate all of those for the city of Portland. So we oversee their budgets, we oversee the planning for them, our staff runs them.
When Metro became Metro, it really cut some, met both Multnomah County and Portland, got some pretty good deals.
Yeah, and what, what I think happened was, as things started to go sideways, if they couldn't make a profit off of it, they gave it to Metro. And so we ended up, you know, when the zoo was...
Pioneer Cemetery?
Pioneer Cemetery.
We've got a house you might have noticed in.
We've got all kinds of buildings.
We've got stuff for you.
We, we own so much stuff that, I mean, it is, when I first came on the Metro Council and they told me we own 14 Pioneer Cemeteries, I just thought, "What? Wait a minute, I didn't sign up to be a, you know, cemetery keeper." But indeed, and we own the performing, we operate the performing arts centers, so it's actually a pretty wonderful piece of the package, because we really do, we do like to think of ourselves as kind of the livability agency, and arts and culture is a big part of what makes this region livable. We also own, we do own and operate the convention center, and this was our best year, which is kind of shocking, given the economy, but our revenues were the highest ever this year at the Oregon Convention Center. And I think at an earlier presentation, I talked to you about how our venues generate about $2 million a day for this region, $2 million a day, over $600 million a year come from the zoo, the convention center, the expo center, and the performing arts centers. So, and that's, I don't remember the numbers exactly, but I think that's around 6,000 jobs, not just Metro employees, but people in restaurants and that really survive because of those facilities.
You know, there's an end-of-the-trail center in town, you could add your mermaid.
We've heard about this. Don't tempt me. We are in the process of, almost finished with actually the master plan for the zoo, as you might remember, in 2008, right after the crash. The voters in this region approved $125 million bond measure for the Oregon Zoo.
That was amazing.
It was amazing, it was, I'll tell you, that was a two-martini night, watching those folks come in. That was very scary. And the first product of that is our, our veterinary hospital, and if you've been to the zoo recently, as you're just coming in, there's a sign so you can, that directs your eye, but it's kind of on the other side of the great northwest, the hospital is taking shape, it's almost finished, and it will be beautiful. We are also, a big part of it was water filtration for the penguins and polar bears, and the penguins have been living next door to the polar bears this summer while we fixed their containers, so they're a little nervous. When we visited the penguins on Friday, they said, "Well, you know, we really don't want you to get too close to the penguins, because they're very stressed." Well, living next door to the polar bears, I can understand, but we will be able to put them back into their, their normal habitat with improved water filtering system very soon. And the, the master plans are on our website now, and you can take a look, it's going to be incredible. We will be tripling the, the land at the zoo for the elephants, for example, and they'll be able to wander around, the zoo train will go over their habitat, so people on the zoo train will have views that no one else will get on the ground. So there really will be a unique experience from the zoo train, and a number of other things happening up there. Believe it or not, all of that is small compared to the Climate Smart Communities Project that we're undertaking as a response to the mandate from the, the state legislature in 2009. The metro region has to come up with scenarios for how we can meet the state greenhouse gas reduction targets, and we are currently in phase one, where we're trying to figure out what, what that means, what are our choices, how do we blend the, this region's unique approach to transportation and land use, walkable communities, the use of transit, all of the things that, that are kind of the hallmarks of this region, how do we, how does that stack up in terms of a greenhouse gas strategy, and what more will we need to do? So we're collecting information, we're beginning the modeling process to come up with what choices we have to make, and we'll be moving through 2012, 2013, and 2014 to complete that process. And unlike the rest of the state, we actually have to implement the strategy we come up with, so it's going to be quite challenging, we are engaging as many people as broadly as we can in this process. We've had a couple of forums over the past couple of years with as many of our jurisdictional councillors and mayors and county commissioners as we could get to the table, we'll continue to have those forums. We need all the advice we can get, because all of us will be affected by it. So that's a huge, a lot of our staff are engaged in that, luckily, the state is helping to fund it, or we wouldn't be able to do the job that we're trying to do, but I think it will set this region again apart from the rest of the United States as just being ahead of things on this, on the climate strategies. And again, I want to reiterate that we are open for comments and, and want to hear from the districts, from the, from throughout the region, I left some cards in the back for anyone who wants to sign up for opt-in, we are at about 5,000 people signed up now from around the region. Again, most of them are still from Portland and Multnomah County, so I want to encourage people in Clackamas County, in Oregon City, and in unincorporated Clackamas County to opt-in and help tell us how to run this region, because we use that survey panel a lot, we consult with them on a lot of big moves, including the zoo master plan. We even went out to the opt-in panel to ask for advice about hiring our new chief operating officer, and you may have seen in the paper, we are going to be voting tomorrow on President Hughes' recommendation that it be Martha Bennett, who was the deputy city manager in Milwaukee, so I had a chance to work with her many years ago when I was a city councillor there, and she was also executive director of the Gorge Commission and is currently the city manager in Ashland, so she's the person that he is recommending, and my sense is, he won't get opposition from the Metro Council on that. So that is my presentation for this quarter, or whatever amount of time it has been.
This is great, great information.
And any questions?
Got a couple. One's a question, one's a thought. The Metropolitan Policy Advisory Committee voted, the council considered a, a request for Forest Road to have industrial land on their north side included, did that go anywhere in the Metro Council?
I think it's still, I mean, it's still, it is now in the mix.
So it's being considered?
It's being considered, absolutely.
Thank you. The other thing is that, as you, as you know, the Mill Creek Canyon has been incorporated into our urban reserves. The city actually has many, many parcels that were dedicated to the city from developments that wouldn't be able to develop it because of steep slopes, a lot of these are close to, are contiguous to Metro and land, and I'd like perhaps over the next year or two to have Metro and our staff work together to see how they can be kind of incorporated in that open space area.
Well, that's a thought, yeah, I hadn't, I didn't think you were going to open space, I thought you were going to go to urban reserves or developing it, but...
No, 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 I just, just because now it's within our urban reserve.
Do you know if it's in a priority area?
That I...
Because we did that huge analysis of what are the priority areas around the region for bond measure money.
Right.
And, and that's why, if it's in a priority area, it's easy. If it's not in a priority area, it's much harder, because that means that some of the priority areas have to, are lowered in priority, basically. We don't, we can't buy them if we use the money for something else, so, but by all means...
If there was a mechanism of donating those lands to you, not you purchasing it from the city, because we can't use them.
Oh, wow, we'll always take free land.
Well, it might be a question, is it contiguous, contiguous to land you already have, from a management perspective?
Yeah, I'm sure, if your staff can talk to our staff, they, they know us well, so we could find out where, where they are and whether or not they would fit from a habitat perspective.
Now, city manager's going to shoot me out for not talking about to him about this before, but that's...
This just came to you tonight, right?
No, actually, it was discussed at former commission meetings, but not in his timeframe.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I think, you know, I...
Great, thank you.
I don't, I'm not in any way integrating previous councillors or representatives, we would get reports on a, on a reasonably frequent basis, but frankly, I think we get more regular reports than we've had from anybody else, so I want to compliment you on that.
Thank you. Well, and as you know, since I ran into you downtown, I spent my two weeks of council recess taking buses and transit and light rail around the region, and, just to photograph cool things happening around the region, and I spent a day in Oregon City, and some of it caught up on my Facebook site, for those of you who have friended me, and others of it are going into my slideshow, so I, it is, Main Street is amazing, what's happening in this city is just wonderful, I, I mean, I am just proud it's in my district, you guys are doing great things, Lloyd Purdy is a god among men as far, as far as I'm concerned, you guys are doing amazing things.
And Tom Hughes was in Alamo, Oregon City yesterday evening, too, so...
He said that, he said he ran into you at a restaurant. I know where you hang out.
Not, not every place, no.
No, many of the restaurants downtown. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We've got several items under ceremonies and proclamations, and the next person we're going to have to speak to us is our own David Noel, if you would come forward.
Mayor and council, or commission, you understand that, we talked about this, just briefly exposed you to this concept of a new... of a new customer service tool that we could use on our website. I've asked David to come tonight and give you an update, and what's significant about this is we've done a lot of work on this since we last briefed you on this, and the most significant thing is the live kickoff will start tomorrow.
Awesome.
And so you're, this is very timely.
Yes.
And you're also, each of you welcome to use, use that request as well. Of course, you can always call me, as you sometimes do, and I'm here to serve that need as well. It, it's even maybe sometimes better for you to call me, because that way I can ask you other questions about feedback you're getting in the community, so don't feel like you have to rely on that tool, I just wanted you to know it's there. It's also a tool that you'll be able to direct your constituents to when they have questions, and it's going to be, from my perspective, a good management tool, because it helps us track our own performance, which is something we're always looking, looking at. So, thank you, David, for coming, and take it
Well, thank you, David, and thank you to the council and everybody who's supported the effort of, you know, more interaction with citizens and the city. And tonight, basically, I just wanted to sort of re-announce, we're going live with this, it's actually live right now on the website, and we've been in sort of a test mode of exchanging a combination of real requests that have come to us over the phone and email, we've been putting them into the system and using it, as well as some test modes. So our intention was to launch this a month or two ago, and we went through a process to make sure that we had all of the workflows and the processes so that managers could be alerted and notified, staff was trained and knew how to work the system, and citizens were in the loop on all the communication. So tonight, all I wanted to do, I only have about 10 slides, and this is mainly from the user's point of view, what it looks like, how to get to it, what it's going to do for you. And I'll be happy to answer any questions of more detail about how it works and anything else you might have. So we have a web application and a smartphone application, where users can submit a request to the city. They can not only submit a request, but also do some research with frequently asked questions. That was one of the reasons that we spent some more time building up the database of information, so that you can search for requests, hopefully avoid having to ask the question in the first place to staff. So on our website, you can search for facts and have your questions answered. If they're not answered, you can submit a request along with a photo and a location, an address, or an intersection, that will help us identify where you're, where you're talking about. You can track the status of that request as it's received by staff, you'll get a confirmation that we've gotten it, you'll get an update anytime action is taken on that, and of course, when it's confirmed, you'll get a closure confirmation. So we've named it OC Request, which is sort of a basic name for all that it does, but the single most thing, the single most popular thing it's going to be used for probably is stuff that you see out in the street, you know, a pothole, a broken water main, a burned-out light, you know, things that we see, but don't always take the time to come in and report or forget about it. So that's the advantage of having the, the phone app. Any of these kinds of physical problems can be reported, as well as other things like, you know, code or permit violations, anything else that we might benefit from being aware of that ordinarily wouldn't be reported. And of course, if, if it's an emergency, please call 911 and go directly to the police via their usual methods. So this is a screenshot of our website, how to find the application, we have an article on the main part of the page circled in red, and then under online services is OC Request. When you go there, you'll be presented with, this is a combination of a couple of, two screens, but the search is presented in the upper-left corner, you can just search for whatever information you're interested in. The most requested topics are dynamically populated in the upper right, and then topics by area, you can just go to the category and department that you're interested in. At the bottom, this building department jurisdictions is an example of one of the topics that doesn't have a request associated with it. Somebody's interested in building jurisdictions, they drill down, they get to this topic, they have their questions answered, or perhaps have links to other resources, but there's no request that can be made off of that. The other vein is, if there is a request, this is what the screen looks like, a portion of it at least. You can have a question, a problem, a complaint, even a compliment, and select your category. We, we have gotten those. Select your category, in this case, an abandoned vehicle. By, by putting a, an address in, it will pull up a Google map, and you can actually pull that pinpoint around if it's not exactly located for you, attach a photo or any other kind of attachment that might be helpful, and then a description of your request. Please ask questions if, if they come up.
Who left their car in the city hall parking lot abandoned? That's what I want to know. That's where
Well, let's find out.
Zoom in, get zoom in on it.
We don't have real-time Google Earth here, sorry. So the other version of this, instead of going to the website, you're, I won't say driving around in your car, but you're, you have your mobile phone available to you and you want to log something in. So you can go to the Android Market or the iPhone App Store and download the application by querying GoRequest, one word. And there's a couple of communities in the area that have it, but if you're located here, your GPS will identify you as being in Oregon City. So it's a real easy process. You open the app, select a category, we've basically summarized all of the different requests that we have on the website into maybe 10 or 12 on the iPhone app, and there's another category if those fail you. Take a picture of your issue, submit it, and it gets sent to us and the appropriate department with a GPS location. You'll get confirmation on your phone that that's been received and can track it. On the left-hand side here, you'll see that you've submitted four topics. Two of those have updates, and so there's a red two that indicates you should go review new information on those. They might have been closed, there might have been additional information. And those same numbers, Topic 68, for example, is available on the website, too, if you want to go look at that. I think this is one of our last slides. So the goals of OC Request is to just streamline the resolution and feedback process that we have been trying to do and always try to do a better job of. We want to be able to track submissions, but we also want the public to be able to stay in touch with activity on those. And adding a mobile component is, is just really key. I mean, everything's going in that direction, so we want to make sure not be left out of that. Better reporting on problem resolutions, there's all kinds of categorizations, reporting by department, how long it's taken to resolve things, types of problems, maybe things that we might want to devote resources to later on that we don't have resources for now. That'll be information that will be useful. And just, you know, sort of bring the whole community into the process of helping the city provide better services. So I'll answer any questions that you might have, otherwise it's just available on our website.
I think this is amazing for Oregon City to be at this point.
That's right.
I think it's amazing.
Can we, I'm like, I just tried to bring it up on the market, and I get Kingy's Pizza when I put in GoRequest.
GoRequest, one word.
Yeah.
Do you have an iPhone?
I, no, it's a Android.
I'd be happy to take a look at it.
Did you order a pizza?
I ordered a pizza.
Not that, of course.
Tech support, he's offering to
Got a new category that we should put in?
I think it's amazing.
Yeah, that's great.
I want, I want to compliment you and your staff in terms of the tremendous work you've been doing in, in communications with the public and in various aspects of information technology in our city. I think you really stand out. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, but also thank you to the whole staff. It's really been a city effort to bring together all of the different kinds of work that we do. Everybody's had revelations in terms of how we prioritize and, and what departments do what. We've really learned a lot from just going through this organization process.
It's actually a pretty big change for some of our frontline staff, and you can imagine the looks of horror and glee in some cases that it wasn't them, that we're going to be affected. So Dave, it's, it's been a long process, but it's been educational. We've all learned more about each other in the organization and how to work better together as a result of it. And it's, it's like any new technology, it's still not perfected, but it's a work in progress, but I think we're there and we feel comfortable with the launch. And I'm looking forward to using this, sort of as a management tool to think about budgeting, too. Usually you have a pretty good idea where the most demand is, but that doesn't necessarily tell you the most efficient way to use it.
Right.
So I think the tool will be good for us as managers as well. So, thank you again.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kizzy, mayor? Want, one last comment about the, the down, the mobile download? And I didn't have any trouble yesterday, it took me 60 seconds to download it, and, and another 60 seconds to input my complaint, my test complaint, take a picture, and send it, and within another 60 seconds, it was in my, my email box.
Oh, wonderful.
It was just seconds.
Wow.
So it worked, I was really surprised.
That's great.
So the mobile application works really well.
Maybe, maybe the system's already been hacked since then.
It's already overwhelmed with
I've got a couple proclamations, and before I read the first one, I'm going to ask if there's any representative other than members of our council that are involved in Oregon City Together or putting forward the Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children. Will you please come forward? I'm going to read this, and then I would like you to talk, to talk about it, if you would. So if you would please come forward. I'll read this proclamation, and then you can tell them why I'm reading it, I understand it. I'll probably follow by a couple comments of my own. But proclamation, September 26, 2011, Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children. Whereas the use of illegal and prescription drugs and the abuse of alcohol and nicotine constitutes the greatest threats to the well-being of Americans' children, and whereas 16 years of surveys conducted by the National Center on Addiction and Substance Abuse, CASA, at Columbia University has consistently found that the more often children and teenagers eat dinner with their families, the less likely they are to smoke, drink, and use illegal drugs, and whereas frequent family dining is associated with lower rates of teen smoking, drinking, illegal use, and prescription drug abuse, and whereas the correlation between frequently family dinners and reduced risk for teen substance abuse is well documented, and whereas parents who are engaged in their children's lives through such activities as frequent family dinners are less likely to have children who abuse substance, and whereas the family dinners have long constituted a substantial pillar of life, pillar of family life in America, now therefore, I Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, do proclaim September 26, 2011, as Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children, and urge all citizens to recognize and participate in this observance and witness thereof. I have hereunto set my hand on the seventh day of September 2011, and while I'm signing it, if you talk, to talk about this proclamation, but the activities also of, I assume you're associated with Oregon City Together as well.
Yes, I'm Robin Morrison, and I'm on the coalition, the Oregon City Together Coalition, which is new, and this is one of our first public efforts to, to address the problem of tobacco, drug, and alcohol use with our youth, which is alarmingly high in our city, and to, to have a coalition that represents 12 different segments of our community, so that we're working together to really do systemic changes, to create a new culture that just isn't dependent about, on tobacco, drugs, and alcohol, so that there's less of a cultural pressure for students to be engaged. This is kind of our, our first effort, and there will be a booth and information at the Health Information Fair on the, on Saturday, the 24th. Do you know more about that, right?
My name's Jerry Hill, I'm the pastor at the United Methodist Church in Oregon City, and also on the Oregon City Together Coalition, and we are just getting formed, and there is a staff person that's been hired. I got a, a call at the church today from somebody who read an article in the local newspaper, that apparently they got theirs today and I didn't. But this, there's an article about Elizabeth Russell, and telling that we're launching this, and he called and said, I've got some ideas and concerns about youth, and could we use some facilities to run an NA program for you? So it's already creating some energy in the, the community to gather around and really support our, our children and youth.
That's great.
Well, it's a very serious problem. We're really in our third generation of serious substance abuse in this country. We don't seem to be able to break through this serious problem. I was just going to say, about a quarter of a century ago, we had, one of our children was involved in very serious substance abuse, it had the potential of taking her life. Fortunately, we were able to ultimately take actions, it turned out that all around. But I do know that earlier on, if we were communicating, not only with that child, but one of, that child's kids that knew about it, but didn't want to rat to the parents on the issue, if we entered some communications along that line, we knew there were problems, we just didn't know there were drug problems. I think, I think we could have intervened at an earlier point, so I really subs, I really support your efforts, and, and as I say, it's, it's a third-generation problem now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I have another proclamation to read. This is a proclamation, September 11th, September 5th, excuse me, September 5th through 11th, 2011, is National Patriotism Week. Whereas the bene, excuse me, whereas the benevolent and protective order of Elks, through its constitution, is a patriotic order, and whereas the order promotes the ideals that the citizens of this nation live in freedom, one through their sacrifices and many tribulations, which have provided the foundation for a free, prosperous, and independent life, and whereas we realize that each generation must work to maintain this freedom, otherwise, throughout carelessness or indifference, the rights and liberties enjoyed may vanish, and whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize this freedom and to honor the nation which provides, provides it. Now I, now therefore, I Doug Neely, Mayor of the City of Oregon City, do proclaim September 5th through 11th, 2011, as National Patriotism, Patriotism Week, and urge all citizens to recognize and participate in this observant, and in witness thereof, I am here setting my hand this seventh day of September 2011 to this document. We, I believe, are a couple days late, what day is this?
The 8th.
The 8th, 7th. So in any case, we are already observing it even before I sign this proclamation. I don't know if there's anybody here from the Order of Elks that wish to speak to this. If I wait to the end, I think we lose all our visitors, so I'm going to make a couple of announcements. One of them that was brought forward at our Urban Renewal Commission meeting, but I was aware of it earlier, is Sunday, September 11, 2011, there's going to be one of many major festivities in Gladstone for their 100th anniversary of the formation of the city. It will be at the Seventh Day Adventist Park, the, the site of the former Chautauqua, and the event starts at 1 o'clock on Sunday. I also wanted to mention that Operation Homefront, and I mentioned it, I think, at the previous meeting, is having a memorial run walk at the community center to recognize this, this day is the 10th anniversary of the, of the destruction of the World Trade Center, and the city will have a booth there, will be giving out water for the run-and-walk, and there will be some presentations as well. So that is on Sunday, September 11th. And I think, let me look here, oh, one other, yes, I got one other thing. And I'm going to take a moment for this one. Yakinna Bay Bridge is celebrating its 75th birthday, they're having a major celebration, it's going to be on October 2011, this is in Newport, there will be, beginning with a bridge procession at 12:00 PM. Those people that want to get down to the coast that weekend, I was strongly to visit this site. This particular bridge is one of many Conde McCollough bridges in, in the state, and I took a little opportunity here to list some interesting facts. Conde McCollough, he was the chief architect on, he, he was involved in many, many bridges, hundreds of bridges, but he was the chief architect on 22 of Oregon Bridges. hundreds of bridges, but he was the chief architect on 22 of Oregon bridges, 14 of which are on the coast. And I listed some important ones here. In the case of the Yakinah Bay Bridge, that was built in 1936. The first one built was in 1922—21. This is the day of completion of the construction, but he was the chief architect. And that's on the old Young Bay Bridge in—out of Astoria. The second one built, 1922, was the Oregon City Bridge, our arch bridge, which is now closed. I don't believe we had a 75th anniversary. My guess is we'll have a tremendous celebration next year when it's open.
I think so.
But I think somehow we've got to get it in the institutional mind that 12 years thereafter will be the 100th anniversary of that particular bridge. And I think that's important. I also think that Oregon City is the only city that has two of his bridges. Does somebody want to tell me who the second—which bridge is the second one? Hmm?
No.
Well, yeah, that's right. They go off on a bridge. That goes over—the goes over—the goes over the Clackamas River, and that was actually built before the Yakinah Bridge. That was 1933. So I'm planning to go there and celebrate with them and hope that 13 years from now they'll be coming over here and celebrating what does for our 100th anniversary of those bridges. Anyway, those are the announcements I had, and now I'll go ahead and try to locate my agenda. But what we have next is our citizens' comments. I want to take just a moment here to read a statement. What we need to do—if we've been running into issues of us not paying attention to the length of time we have citizen comments before us—we have one person. I concentrate too much on the comments, and I don't pay any attention to the time. And really, we want to confine these comments to three minutes for topics not currently on the agenda. And we're reinstituting what we had here before, so nobody has to push a buzzer or anything. There's no buzzer associated with this at all. But there is an indicator light there that green, you're talking; yellow, I think you have 30 seconds left in the three minutes; and red means you've exhausted your three minutes. Now, if you're in the middle of the sentence or a short paragraph, we'll probably not terminate it then. But we have been going kind of long in some of these, so I'm going to go ahead and become a little bit more serious about maintaining that time level. And I think Karen Mori is generally able to confine herself to two, three minutes. Here, here. That's what I was going to say. Here, she's able to do the three minutes.
You're saying one word, saving your name for the last.
Karen Mori, I live outside the city of Oregon City. I'm here to say thank you for the 16th Annual Open Air Antique Fair. We had a fantastic year. The weather cooperated. The streets were full by 7:30. We open at 8:00, but hey, they were full all day. Everyone had something in their hands. They were shopping. Vendors were thrilled. Music was great. Appraiser was busy. I think this is the best year we've had maybe ever, and I want to give my thank yous for the City of Oregon City Code Enforcement Nancy Bush, Public Works Department, particularly John Lewis, Kevin Hanks, Fran Schaefer, and wow to Mike Schroeder. He was incredible. He was so helpful this year. Oregon City Police Department Reserve Officer Jason Thompson controlled traffic for us in the morning. Also Fire District Number One, Clackamas County Offices Sustainability—I'm having tongue problems—Clackamas County Tourism and Cultural Affairs, the Oregon City Evangelical Church Youth Groups, and Pastor Josh Shelton. The senior high kids show up by 4:00 in the morning to take out tables and help unload. Junior high kids show up at 4:00 in the afternoon when us old folks are dead and do all the cleaning, pick up. The kids are utterly incredible. Also, thank Rock Residue Band, Millis Estate Services, United Site Service, B&amp;B Leasing, who again took care of all of our garbage, Oregon City Signs, Coffee Rush, who donate coffee to our vendors, Home Depot, who donated a great big huge push cart to us this year that made getting the tables out much easier. Munos Bakery, Jennifer got up at 2:00 in the morning, oh, with the rest of us, went in and baked fresh donuts for the vendors, and I didn't hear a single complaint this year from the vendors about the food. Caulfield House for allowing us to put them out at their location. Our sponsors, Oregonians Credit Union, Instats, Coin Corner and Hobbies, Christmas at the Zoo, David and Marcia Wimmer, Harmony Road Music Center, and Executive Copy and Printing. And now I have the people. Doug and Betty for being down there at 2:30 in the morning with me, along with Claire and Victoria Alley. Sylvia—and I can never get this right—Baguette Galupi Shik. Joyce Gifford—
Baguette Lupe. It means kiss of the wolf.
I'm going to start saying it that way instead. Joyce Gifford, Marion Jonathan Hines, Danit Hopjost, Dale Lockman, Ryan Mori, Sherri O'Brien, John Paulson, Claire and Charlie Paulson, Lisa and Jasmine Sprecker, Matthew Morrissey, Laura and Ken Holveck, Nancy Ide, Allison Mike Norris, Nicole Davis, and the lovely Rocky Smith, who I abused dreadfully by leaving him at the end of the street, telling him he had to hand all the vendor maps out before he went home.
The problem is people started bringing them back because they didn't want to waste them, and so the box kept filling back up.
So he threatened me slightly, by the way. He got one minute of my time, so no. Also, there were 2,691 riders on the elevator. There were also a lot of people on the stairs because the elevator was limited to 10 passengers. We had several businesses open that did wonderful business during the day, including three of our newest businesses on Main Street. You can leave your hat on, the House of Calabash and Christmas at the Zoo, and the Oregon Antique Mall right across the street had their grand opening on the 28th and did wonderful business.
Great.
Thank you.
And I also want to comment, I love the new app. The next time there's a huge, big, dead skunk on railroad, I don't have to call John Lewis, I can send in an email.
Well, I got—I'm just going to make a couple of comments. One is I talked to several of the vendors in my block. All but two of them indicated they had very good days. One thought they did better the year before. One, who was a first-timer, came down from Seattle and said he was not planning to come back. He was planning to earn $3,000. He only made—earned $1,900. And the other comment I had was, you didn't mention being serenaded to "Oh, what a beautiful morning."
Yes. Having just had Oklahoma at the Clackamas Repertory Theater, Doug is an expert at singing "Oh, what a beautiful morning" when the sun rises.
Anyway.
Thank you to the chamber for doing a great job of putting it together.
Yes, it was. Very—I think it's our number-one, in fact, Main Street draw, and I appreciate it very much. Now, we're going to general business. The first and second readings of Ordinance Number 11-1009, amending Chapter 1324-03 of the Oregon Municipal Code to delete an obscene definition and amend another definition declaring it an emergency. And when the staff is giving this report on this, I would ask what the need for the emergency is. Thank you. Normally, we do second—first readings, and the second readings are on a different date unless we declare emergency, in which case we do a second reading on the same date. In order to get a second reading, we have to have—on that same day, we have to have a unanimous vote by the City Commission on the first reading, I believe.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, the City of Oregon City had adopted in 1999 a telecommunications services code to protect the rights of way in our city. And over the past 12 years, as you know, the advances in technology have been such that—and there's been a competitive market force that's impacted the telecom industry and how it delivers services to its customers. And as a result, the definition of telecommunications has changed, and so it's—we're in the process of revising that and bringing it up to standard. We are current—the reason for the emergency is that we're currently in negotiations with one, two, three, four, five, about six different entities, and it's just causing a conflict of what exactly are we trying to say? And so we—are our franchise attorney put together a new definition, and if we are able to pass it on in two readings tonight, that would be—that would be helpful in the negotiation process. If not, it will delay things a little bit, but we can—we can manage that. So it's up—it's up to the City Commission how they want to proceed. And if you have any questions, the city attorney is here to answer them as well as I.
I guess I would ask, do you have any issues regarding the wording of the ordinance from our city attorney?
Basically, we've relied upon special counsel on this. They are experts. They recommend it. I concur.
Do I hear a motion?
All right. Mr. Sullivan, help me out here.
I would move first reading of Ordinance 11-1009.
So moved. Look at that.
So moved.
I've learned that one.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have the first reading.
This is Ordinance 11-1009, an ordinance amending Chapter 33.24.030 of the Oregon City Municipal Code to delete an obsolete definition and amend another definition and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nacida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion for a second reading and final adoption?
So moved. Second.
This is Ordinance 11-1009, an ordinance amending Chapter 13.24.030 of the Oregon City Municipal Code to delete an obsolete definition and amend another definition and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Very good. With that, I would say that was a fast—
Roll call.
Roll call. Oh, that's right.
My part here. Commissioner Nacida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. I would point out, though, I didn't let the city attorney do the first reading before I asked for it.
Also, we need to do the second reading.
Huh?
Don't you need to do the—read the second?
Two.
Yeah, we just did it.
Did we do the roll call on the first reading?
Yes, we did. We did. Okay, I thought you had to read it a second time.
Anyway, with that, I think that's the first thing we've ever passed so quickly in this commission.
That wasn't really that quick.
No, no, no. This is the first item. This is the first item that we've had that quickly. Okay, resolution before us is consideration of recommendation from Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission to allocate $125,000 from the general fund toward the Ermertinger House Restoration and Preservation Project. And this—in this case, I guess the staff to speak to this is Scott Archer.
Thank you, Mayor Neely and City Commissioners. I know that you're well aware of our—of our current plight and our efforts and what we're doing to put together a package—a funding package to renovate and preserve the Ermertinger House. So we won't—we won't revisit all of that tonight unless you have any specific kind of refresher questions for me on that. But before you is a consideration—or I should say, a recommendation that came back to you from the Urban Renewal Commission. The Urban Renewal Commission considered a request on August 17th to appropriate $125,000 from its contingency fund as a match to the $125,000 that has already been put forward by the City Commission in last year's fiscal year and this year combined. We basically have $125,000 to go towards that restoration and preservation. At the—as I think all of you know, at that meeting, being that you all sit on that board as well, the Urban Renewal Commission recommended instead of taking that money out of its fund that it recommended back to you, to consider adding another $125,000 from the city budget versus the Urban Renewal budget, and that would—that would bring the total commitment from the city up to $250,000 if you were to take such action. You've got some different options on how you might consider doing this, and what I'd like to do is just quickly go over those with you, and then we can kind of talk about process or whatever you'd like to do. You have the option of allocating that within the current fiscal year budget from your contingency fund. You could consider this—you could basically make some type of a commitment to put this into your goal-setting for next year's budget, if you wish to do that, and then consider that at that time. Or you could take another course of action that actually City Manager Fraser and Finance Director David Wimmer and I discussed, which was we could—we could set up a dedicated fund that would essentially kind of move the—this—these city funds into this dedicated fund, so it's not in the general fund where we don't have to worry about doing this reallocation thing, because the likelihood of this is that as we go through these efforts, working with—you know, for example, we're trying to enlist various partners, and we're going after a number of grants, and it's likely that the funds for this, as we move towards our ultimate goal, which is a $700,000 estimated cost that it's going to take us to do this project, it's going to take us a little bit of time to get there, and that way we don't have to worry about, you know, crossing the—from one budget year to another if we're able to set up a dedicated fund. So that's something that we've discussed, and the idea there would be that the commission—you would still need to take some type of a supplemental budget action. The—what you could do, if you wish to do so, if you're interested in supporting this, is you could direct staff to—to go and identify a specific funding source to bring back to you a recommendation, and then that would have to be followed up with a supplemental budget action that would formalize the budget process for this, so—because this is not adopted in your current—your current budget. So those are some different options, the last of which I discussed is, I think, where we've kind of looked at that makes the most sense from—the staff's perspective, but again, of course, you can—you can consider any of those options that you wish. Maybe that's clear as mud, what I mean to confuse you with the budgetary process.
Well, let me see if I can—I can try to take a stab at it as well. You remember—you probably remember this last year, but we had a discussion about Ermertinger at the time. Mr. Archer mentioned that we had about $20,000, $25,000 left from unexpended funds last year that we—that you directed us to put toward Ermertinger. Then when we had the actual budget, we budgeted $100,000 more. So Mayor Neely and Commissioner Smith and I, and any of us who've been involved in having discussions outside our jurisdiction with others who might want to contribute, we've been using that 125 figure, I would say, a lot. And the complication is, is that when that—when that budget year passes, the fiscal year ends, as Mr. Wimmer reminded us today, well, that $25,000 evaporates back into cash reserves, I call it. He calls it fund balance. And so I think the prudent thing to do is simply create that additional fund that's separate just for that. Then when we have those things happen, we put that money in there, and it's more or less like a savings account, and we don't—it's also much more streamlined for us, it's easier for our auditors to look at, and then we know what we have, when we have it, and that we always have it until we get enough to do this thing. Because there are going to be some expenditures along the way that we will be drawing, but we won't draw them in the whole year. For example, this year, we're going to spend our year probably fundraising more than building, and so at the end of the budget cycle, we lose whatever we had in there, and then we have the same problem. So I think until the project's done, the smartest thing for us to do is bring back to you a budget amendment that would create this additional fund account, as a separate account dedicated. And then at that time, we can—if—that will give us a little more time, too, to look and see if we can find this additional 125 that I still think Urban Renewal should have given you, but—
No. Regardless—
There were a few of us that agreed with you. I know. But that—that didn't happen, and— Yeah. That's the majority.
If you—if you—you know, I'm going back and looking at it based on the recommendation that was coming forward in terms of the alley, and you saw the request out of that contingency fund was—was more than half of it, and we asked for—if we—if that whole amount had passed—which it didn't, but if that whole amount had passed and we did the other 125, we would have been down with zero in contingency. And so I think—in one sense, I think the Urban Renewal Agency was being rather prudent in its decision, even though I was voting the other way.
It was your agenda item.
Yeah. The—I guess the question I have in terms of whether we do this now, we've set this other fund up, the intent is to set this other dedicated fund up with the 125 now.
And any other money that we raise, for example.
Any other—
Yes.
But you say—even—we've been saying 125, and that's true, but I said, and I thought we could come up with 250 when I've been talking to people.
Well, we are suggesting that we look for that now.
No, I understand that. What I would like to do, though, is create a strong sense from the commission that the intent is to come up with what amounts to about a third of the funds to do that restoration. So I would suggest that we make a motion to create that— So I, I would suggest that we make a motion to create that, that, that dedicated fund.
Sure.
But that I would like to see another motion saying that we request staff to, if they can't find other funding sources, to commit, to put as a line item on the next budget cycle, $125,000 to go into the fund. If we are, or a match enough to bring the fund up to 250,000.
I don't think you need a motion for that. I think you just need to direct us to create the fund, we'll bring it back. And the reason you don't need a motion is you've already got it in your council goals and we're going to work every day.
No, I understand.
Until you tell us it's done.
But the fact, if I'm talking to somebody and they say, yeah, but who agreed with it? I said, the whole commission voted.
Yeah, we need to.
And I think that, that in terms of.
But what Mr. Archer's recommendation was, not only that we create the fund, but then you direct us to look for the additional 125 and report back if and when we find it.
Yes.
To get the, get the additional 125, not look for it.
Well, getting it may require another budget cycle, but we're going to.
I understand that, that's what I want, that's why I want the motion to be a strong one. And to get it, not to look for it.
Okay.
So does anyone want to put words for the motion?
Yeah, again, just to remind the commission, I, and Mr. Sullivan or Mr. Wimmer, you can tell me if I'm misspeaking here, but I, I think what you're doing in essence is you're, in your words, Mayor, you're probably strongly recommending that, that we bring this action back to you. We, we don't have a budget amendment in front of you tonight.
I understand.
And there will be some, some process work that'll have to be brought back to you. So that, I think it'll be a, I believe it'd be a recommendation to do so, is that.
Give your direction and make it a direction to staff to bring it back. That way, we can tweak it if necessary and you can see it before it comes into action.
Okay, I just, whether the motion's made at that point or this point, I want it to be a strong motion. And so the direction, I guess we can give the direction and see it as a motion in which we are actually committing the 125 out of this budget cycle to go into that dedicated fund and that we're instructing staff to get another 125,000, not to look for it, but to get it.
Okay.
I would like to see like a motion, actually, so that we have, even though we don't need it, even though we don't need it, I get it.
Yep.
But then it's on the record.
Well, I can't make it.
Okay, I'm gonna try to make it. I move that we direct staff to create a designated fund for the 125,000 already committed by the city commission for the Ermertinger House and to get the other 20, 125,000 and report back to the commission with a budget amendment to show where that money is coming from.
Where it's likely to come from.
Yes.
So I will second that.
Does that cover it?
I think that covers it. I will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. Okay, with that, I think we're, I failed to adopt the agenda again, sorry about that. Let me go ahead and ask if there's anything that anybody wants to be pulled off a consent agenda.
Well, I think we still have one more item.
We do.
Don't we have C?
Seven C?
Oh, seven C, resolution, I'm sorry, rescinding Resolution 1117 and calling off an election. That's a rather important one.
That's kind of.
Yes.
Do you want to go or you want me to? The manager's asked me to make this report.
Okay.
You gave direction in mid-August to send out to the voters a annexation request. It was controversial, I know you know that, you remember it. And in the course of doing that, you adopted a ballot title. The ballot title went through the challenge process, nobody challenged it. A week ago, Monday, if I remember correctly, the Secretary of State's office imposed $75 fines against a number of staff at the Portland School District for helping out on the selling of a bond issue, which ultimately failed. The, the manager, he says he's paranoid, I say he was prudent, directed us to share the ballot's explanation statement, which is something you generally don't see, with the Secretary of State's office. The same person who was involved with the levying of those fines reviewed it, said that this looks like it's trying to go over the line and, and is selling the measure. I disagree with that, but nevertheless, that's what, what they said. And recommended that we take some language out of this draft statement. The city recorder noted that some of the statement, the explanatory statement was taken out of the ballot title. So, which you had already proven, had already been through the challenge period. We went round and round for some time in looking at what our options were. There was not sufficient time to redo a ballot title. And we could have gone with the one we had. I think you would have been okay, but it was prudent to look at it and it was prudent to avoid controversy and a potential fine. We concluded, the three of us, that it would be better service for the citizens of the city to come back, do a new ballot title and send it out at a later time and not try to jam it through at this time. So that's why this resolution is before you. It would rescind the previous approval of the ballot title and sending the matter out and defer it. We will bring it back for a public hearing before the commission one more time so that you can look at the issue again and deal with the ballot title.
Has nothing to do with this, but it's related. It was the way you stated, I think, the, the Portland School Board members, it was based upon their title statement and what they.
It was, it was supporting material, actually.
Okay, my question is that if, if one of us as an individual wrote a letter in support or against any, that's not, that's not the issue. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, okay.
So then does that mean it, it all goes back and we listen to all the testimony again?
You can just re-adopt the ballot title, but I would recommend that you have a hearing on the ballot title before you send it out.
Just the ballot title.
Yeah, I mean, you've made your decision, it's up to you.
Okay.
You could reopen the whole thing if you want.
Please, no.
And just so, so the commission knows, we did speak to the applicant, Mr., our staff did speak to the applicant about this. And I believe they're looking at May, is that right, the May election? And so the hearing then would be sometime before that date, but it wouldn't necessarily have to open up the whole record.
So it seems like it's like a ticky tacky thing that the state's doing.
I will tell you that our annexation ballot titles follow what every other city's been doing.
Yeah, well, I, I.
And the offending language was essentially that the commission had made the determination that the city could serve the area with services, city services. And that was considered to be, I know that, you know, I have learned this, I learned this a hard way, which my father always said was the best way for me to learn, that.
Or did he say it was the only way you ever learned?
Both. But, but just because it's a fact does not insulate the alleged party who is alleged to have committed a violation. So it can be a fact, it can even be, in your view, a benign fact. In grants past, we called our emergency services department emergency services. But yet, when we used the lang, the word, emergency was in one of the documents that my staff wrote to the council, that was enough for a fine. So when you're calling 911, most of us feel like that's an emergency. But just using that word was considered an emotional word that was, that was interpreted as advocacy. So there's not a way to be too careful, I think, in this situation because it's, it's a difficult law to enforce, got a great purpose behind it. But, you know, it's pretty ambiguous if you're on the other end trying to dance over that tightrope. And so I just thought it's better to be prudent than sorry.
I want a motion to pass Resolution 1119.
I move that we have passed first, Resolution, I forgot the number now, hold on.
1119.
1119.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can we discuss only having the ballot title reopened? Or is that not something we should discuss at this time?
It's up to you.
We could, we can pass this resolution, I guess, and, and make a decision.
Go back to it if you want to.
Yeah, and come back to it.
Okay.
And we can do that.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes by two.
Resolution passes. With that, now I'll ask if there is any item on the consent agenda anybody wishes to pull. And with that.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. Communications, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to let the council know that there is an emergency management elected and appointed officials training Thursday, October 6th, I have the handout here if any of you are interested. We do participate in that, our police chief and his entire department, as well as our other departments in my office participate in that. I probably won't be at this training, but this is available for you. If any of you's interested, let us know and we'll get you the information. Also, I wanted to mention that there is a opportunity, a volunteer opportunity to work with SOLV on September 17th, Saturday, from 10:00 to 1:00 at the, for the Beach and Riverside Cleanup. And I have that information here, it's on the Goat Island Stewardship Day in Gladstone. I volunteered a couple of times with this organization, I know Mayor Neely's affiliated with it as well. It's a great outfit, if you're interested in volunteering. I'll be out of town for that, but I have that as well if any of you are interested. And then I think you've all seen my email explaining a little bit about the business license application from the Blue, is it Blue Sky? Oregon Sky Foundation.
Oregon Sky.
And we have not yet issued the denial letter of the business application because we've been working with Ed to secure a hearings officer. But that letter will be coming out probably within a week. And when that occurs, I would recommend to you that if you do get calls about it, particularly from the applicant, that you would not discuss it because you may actually have to render a judgment later on it, so it's better if you don't.
Probably not discuss it with anybody.
Yeah, not with anybody. Well, you can discuss it with me if you have questions or Ed. And then just my hats off to all of our staff who worked on that OC request. Also, I'm going to be out, I might be out of town next, at your next meeting for the International City Management Conference in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Last year, I flew back on a plane and got here right at the, right at the bell when I walked through the door. That might actually happen again, depending on my flight back. But if I'm not here, Scott will be here to walk you through whatever you need from my office. And then Nancy Kay, you had something you wanted to talk about?
I've been working. Been working with jurisdictions throughout the state and with, I believe it's the University of Oregon, on a Willamette Valley Climate Change Pact, Preparation Pact. And it's, it's, it's a resolution that different jurisdictions are being asked to consider adopting so that we can, in the Willamette Valley, all work very collaboratively in preparing for potential changes that might be coming our way that could impact our economy, our health, our agriculture, and many, many other things that would potentially relate to climate change. And they're going to have a, a summit to start getting the word out more, especially to electeds. And I was wondering if I could send you some information on this. They're calling it the Willamette Valley Resilience Compact. And they're hoping at this, at this retreat, it's a, it's a half-day retreat in Salem, that they can have electeds participate, at least one elected from each jurisdiction that's interested in continuing on this, considering signing along on this pact. So I was wondering if I could send it out to you and you could take a look at it and then let me know if one of you would be interested in going. At this point, if, if I don't go, I'll send John Lewis, he's, I, I was going to most of the stuff initially and then I couldn't make one, so he went, so he's becoming more familiar with it as well. But from a public work standpoint, I think there's some relevance. And so with, if I can have your permission to send that to your information, if you would take a look at it.
Sure.
And then, since it's not till November 16th, we have some time, but I wanted to give you enough time too. So it wouldn't be, you know, you could get it in your schedule if you're interested.
Thank you.
And lastly, I know some of you have the League of Oregon Cities Conference coming up that you signed up for. I'll probably be there as well. And then to, to be clear on when I'm going to be leaving for the ICMA conference, I will be actually flying out next Friday and then I will be returning next Wednesday night. Maybe before the meeting, I have to check my schedule again. But also, I wanted to give you an update on the recruitment progress we're making on two key positions. One is my executive assistant position. We had 101 applications, so that's good. And some of them were internal from some of the more talented staff that we have here that you will or probably be familiar with. So I'm encouraged by the pool. We're going to be working on that in earnest in the next couple of days to try to firm up those interviews. And then the more, the more prominent position, the one that I think has more interest at least as far as the commission and community-wide, is the Economic Development Manager position. That has closed, we have approximately 70 applications.
Wonderful.
So that's a good, strong pool, great job from HR. They're not here tonight, but Jim has done a wonderful job getting the, getting that much interest in those, those position, in that position. And I wanted to remind the commission that we're gonna, we haven't refined this yet because the position just closed. But the process again I'm looking at is to use a citizens panel, a business panel, business and technical panel, if you will, and then a staff panel consisting of myself and our executive team. And then to also have a candidates reception, some sort of forum where you can meet and mingle with the top candidates and, and some kind of forum that lets conversation flow easily and let you meet with, see each of them, sort of. You did some of that when you recruited your city managers, because I remember being called upon and said, stand up and tell us about yourself, you have five minutes.
Yes.
And that was really a fun surprise, but at least we all had to go through it.
And you had one 15-hour day.
Yeah, that's right, 115 hours. So, so it's going to be kind of a grueling, you know, it's, it's three, for, for us, actually at the staff level, it'll be just as grueling as for them, but essentially you're going to have three one-hour interviews. And then after that, there's going to be some real extensive background checks. I actually may go to some of the communities where some of these folks are from. Hopefully, that won't be very far away. But, you know, it's, it's going well so far, but it's a process and we're involved in it. And I just want to thank you for your patience and looking forward to getting some help.
Thank you, thanks for filling in, Tony.
I was going to say, a similar process was undertaken when actually we hired Maureen for the library director position.
And Lloyd.
And then Lloyd as well. So I mean, it is a position, it's a mechanism where you have different groups talking to them and getting a feeling for it. I think it's worked very well for us.
I think so too. And then lastly, I was not here when Commissioner, Urban Renewal Commissioner Edgar raised the issue of the conduit for our downtown project. I know the council doesn't like surprises or emergencies and I don't, I don't either. But sometimes those are, come to us in terms of an opportunity. And I believe very much in the virtue of that project that he identified and would like to try to find some money for it. I talked to the finance director today. He reminded me that in our cable TV funds account, and I want you to know firsthand that this would not jeopardize our commitments to Willamette Falls TV in any possible way. But that is a potential funding source, we need between 50,000 and 70,000. And, and really Nancy can't give me any firmer numbers than that because we're literally in the middle of this project trying to add this as a, as a change order. And I can't spend that money because it's not budgeted. And so if the council was, is so inclined to entertain that request, I'd like to have your permission to bring it back to you, quickly.
I get, I mean, I don't know if you all need to, I think, I think we need a discussion at the next commission meeting because I do have some questions. I can understand if you're digging a trench already, it makes sense to lay conduit material. I don't know if that means that we want to go out and hook up every block to it or something of that nature, so.
Well, actually, you know, we need to, we need to have both to really make it a functioning system. We would love to be in a position where we had the mainline con- We would love to be in a position where we had the mainline conduit in, then we have a franchise agreement with a utility provider. We don't have one of those yet. We've had people nibble around the edges that say they're interested in providing that utility. But I think it's going to be a question of installing it and then getting reimbursed if there is a franchise agreement. And I don't want to lose that opportunity. I don't want to be in a position where we have to cut any part of our new sidewalk. And so what I'm going to suggest to you, Mayor and Commission, is that we get this on the next agenda, bring it back, have a discussion, give you more information and details on this project and why we believe in it. And then at least have on the agenda an opportunity for you to vote to appropriate the funds. And if you need more time to process that information...
Are you talking about city funds or renewal?
Yeah, city funds.
Okay.
Because that's the cable TV account and that's not urban renewal. But that is the place where the finance department has identified as a place where we have that surplus available. So I just, I know you don't want to make the decision the same night that you have the discussion, but I want that option to be available for you if you do decide you're comfortable enough to make the decision. And if you're not, no pressure, no harm, but at least you'll have the resolution available.
Yeah. Can I just add some? This has come up really at the last minute on this project. And we submitted the, I mean, the final contract documents are at ODOT right now. So we are going to be doing an addendum during the contract, during the bidding period to add this to the contract. And we're trying to write it so it's very flexible, too, so that we are also just sent out letters to all of the utility providers in Oregon City if they're interested in getting in there while the trench is open. So we're really trying to make whatever can happen, and yet we don't want to make any mistakes. So that's why we're kind of asking for, you know, some kind of permission to be looking at that funding that we need.
Not permission to make a mistake.
Flexibility, Your Honor, flexibility.
No, no, we don't want to make a mistake. There's no permission. But basically, permission to have access to funding because we can't use street SDCs or other transportation funding to put in conduit for fiber, for computer service.
It's really an important piece of what we want to be able to talk about as far as promoting and enticing business to come here. We want to have that one more thing we can say we have, you know, for our city, that we're that much further ahead of some of our competition as far as what's available for businesses.
I have a comment, I guess. We, I don't know, I hear a lot, "It's always about Main Street. It's always about Main Street." Is there any way that you can make that fiber go up the hill so the other business people can also take advantage and enjoy it?
Well, the county's installing dark fiber for use. And I'm not sure if it's available for urban areas. I think it's mostly for rural areas.
Counties.
The counties. But I do know that there's more and more fiber going in throughout Oregon City, right? And that's one of the reasons why we asked you to pass that ordinance earlier, changing the definition of telecommunications, so that we can make sure that as this fiber stuff comes along, we've got the right franchise agreements for it. So which ones, for example, are you aware of for fiber?
The one that I'm aware of at this time is the county is trying to lay the dark fiber. And we're working on a memorandum of understanding with them right now, just so that we have everything...
I might be able to respond a little bit to Commissioner Ma on this. What typically would happen in a situation like this one is the city or whomever's doing the project would put in the conduit and own the line and the right of way.
Yeah.
Then if there's a franchise agreement, and I anticipate that there would be, I just don't know if it would be six months or one month or a year, then there would be a franchise agreement and whoever the franchisor is, the utility, then they're going to want to expand their market share in the community. And so this gives us a basis upon which to form the utility in the first place, and then it helps create and generate a market. And once that takes hold, they're going to want to expand. And I think that's when our opportunity is to go up the hill and down the road and...
And around the corner.
Yeah, and get it everywhere, yeah. I think that's a great idea, especially in our main commercial corridors.
And another just thought I just had is our franchise fees, I wonder if those should be in a dedicated fund for when these kinds of things come up instead of having that go into the general fund? So when the opportunity comes up that we can expand, I mean, the money's there.
Forty percent goes into the...
I think you need to come to a microphone. But I just thought, well, gosh, that would have been perfect if that money would have been just set in there. We could have taken advantage of it. Because the franchise fees goes into the general fund, part of it.
But 60% general fund, 40% into this other fund. So that's why the telecommunications fund has about $90,000 extra in it right now. Because it gets Comcast, which part of it we give to, a lot of falls, but non-Comcast all stays in there.
In the general fund?
No, in the, it's got Fund 409 and the cable TV fund. We pay for stuff. I mean, that's what bought all the equipment.
I know, I think it's great. I think it's great.
It was a hundred and some thousand and we spent on the cameras and things.
The commission has complete access to it anyway, regardless of which one of those ways we accumulate the funds. You've got access to it and you can make that decision.
I was hoping for an extra pot of money.
Yeah.
To run up the hill.
We'll look for that. We'll look for that, too. Thank you.
She wants to tear up Seventh Street again?
Yeah.
Well, let me rethink that.
Is that it from?
I could probably send air...
City manager? Is that it?
That's all, yes.
Okay. One thing we've mentioned here was the League of Oregon Cities meeting in Bend, that's correct, I think. I won't be able to attend, but I think three of us are planning to go. Is that right?
I'm going. Who else is going?
I think Commissioner Roth and we need a person that can vote there. It seems I won't be there, and it seems to me that Commissioner President is the appropriate person to vote. I would suggest, you know, if there's something of interest that you want to discuss with the three beforehand to do so, but you would then be representing us as a voting...
Well, what I'd like to do in that instance is actually maybe see if I can get enough information before we leave and discuss it amongst the whole group.
Some of the votes may be taken there at the meeting.
Right. But if there's anything that we know of it in advance that's going to be voted on, I'd like to just chat about it with the whole group.
Sure.
I'll get to that for you.
Thank you.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to mention was that Commissioner President James Nocita, Peter Walters and Plannion and I interviewed four candidates for the Natural Resource Committee meeting. I've actually signed the documents. I'll be announcing it, but we effectively appointed the three to fix term positions and I'll be announcing, the four, excuse me, to fix term positions. I'll be announcing that next time. We still have openings on the Budget Committee and on the two granting committees. That is the Oregon Civic Improvement Trust, which are funds that come in from our 4% hotel motel tax, and then also from the Metro Enhancement Fund, which we get from Metro on 50 cent tipping fees per tons. And those, we have openings on those, but we also have applicants. And we'll be, we've also had some additional applicants coming in our Natural Resource Committee. And so in October, we'll be doing some additional interviews for all three of those.
Great.
And for that, anybody else have...
We have a C4 retreat coming up this week, Thursday afternoon and all day Friday. So I know the mayor and I'll be there.
Commissioner Ma is our representative of C4. I'm also, I'm the alternate there. And when, they do have meetings, sometimes they split their meetings into city jurisdiction groups and then unincorporated Quackams County groups. I try, when that's the case, I try to attend just to find out what's going on, the unincorporated county groups, so have some notion of what their concerns are.
Yes.
Any other commission reports? Commissioner Roth?
I have one. I spoke this afternoon with the owners of the building there at Weatherford's, and they told me that they are trying to open again by next week, so...
So are they open? They open today?
No, it was just applications.
They were doing, getting applications of the sign there, yeah.
But she was asking that we kind of spread the word that there's going to be something there very quickly, and they're looking at keeping the place going.
Yeah, another restaurant.
Cole Highcliff.
Did you forget who that was for a second?
Briefly.
No reports other than I'll say, the mayor and Scott and myself met with the city of Portland again about the Irma Tinger House and talked with the staff contacts for all the other commissioners. And so just kind of report that we did that. And that went really well, I think. The other thing I wanted to say is it's schools back in session, so drive slow. And I was so excited about getting back to school to tell everybody about this whole attendance court thing. The teachers are just amazed. They think it's the greatest thing ever. Kids haven't really started hearing about it, but the ones I've kind of mentioned to, I don't know, they're a little worried about it. So anyway, I'm excited to see how that goes.
They'll have dinner with their parents.
Yeah. And they need to have dinner with their parents on, what night is it?
September 7th.
So anyway, that's all I'll say. But good job on the Antique Fair. It is a great event and enjoyed being down there. I was down there all day. I wasn't down there as early as some of you were, but the entire commission was down there at one point throughout the day, which was cool and...
Yeah, he even helped me do my Christmas shopping.
Who did?
You did.
I did?
Yeah.
That was really nice of me. Oh, yeah. I saw, yeah, I saw a book in this booth that I had to tell her about, and she went and bought it. It was in a Beaver's booth.
Yeah, it was tough.
Well, you know, but you did it anyway. That's it.
Yes, Commissioner Nocita.
I am still commuting on Amtrak. And a couple of us have been discussing Amtrak in some detail. And when the mill closed and we were looking at the opportunities that that might present, one of my interests was in the fact that opening up the falls to tourists, going, getting that as a first-rate tourist attraction, might present an Amtrak opportunity, namely getting the West Coast line, the Coast Starlight, to stop in Oregon City. And with the head nods of the commission, I drafted a letter for the mayor's signature and got some good comments on it. And if folks don't mind, I'd like to read it for the folks at home to say what, to hear what we're saying. This letter is being sent to Mr. Robert Eaton, who is the Government Affairs Director for Amtrak in Oakland. This contact information came from David Blair, who is a staff member in Senator Wyden's office. And I had lunch with him and chatted about this a couple of months ago. So here's the letter. Dear Mr. Eaton, On behalf of the City Commission of Oregon City, I am writing to invite and request that Amtrak include Oregon City as a stop on the route of the Coast Starlight train that runs between Los Angeles and Seattle. Oregon City is the oldest incorporated city in the western United States. It is situated at the historic end of the Oregon Trail, along the banks of the Willamette River, adjacent to the majestic and culturally significant Willamette Falls. While we believe that our community could benefit greatly from a Coast Starlight stop, we believe that such a stop would also provide a great benefit both to Amtrak and to its passenger and customer base. For example, a stop in Oregon City would service the large population in the southeast metropolitan Portland area that would no longer have to drive approximately 30 miles to Union Station in downtown Portland. Oregon City is embracing a future of great transition and opportunity. The most profound and significant transition opportunity involves public access to Willamette Falls, which has largely been off limits to the public throughout much of the city's industrial past. Now that is all about to change as a result of the closure of the Blue Hair and Paper Mill several months ago. Willamette Falls is a magnificent cascade, the third largest by volume on the North American continent, and is the defining feature of Oregon City in its history, a historic gathering place for Native Americans, the destination of pioneers, and the water source for the city's historic primary industries, paper and woolen milling. Oregon City is a partner in the effort to establish the Willamette Falls National Heritage Area. The coming transformation of Oregon City's historic mill site at the base of the falls presents an opportunity to provide the public with direct access to Willamette Falls. Oregon City's elected and community leaders and staff have been meeting to plan for public access to the Willamette Falls as a part of the transition of the mill site. As we say in Oregon City, we want folks to be able to get close to the falls and feel the thunder in a way that will compel thousands of visitors each year to share in this experience. Such public access would instantly make Willamette Falls in Oregon City a regional, national, and indeed international tourist destination. The Coast Starlight line runs right past Willamette Falls. Indeed, one of our sitting city commissioners' first view of Willamette Falls in Oregon City was from the window of the Coast Starlight train. A stop in Oregon City would benefit Oregon City by bringing tourists from throughout the entire west coast and in turn benefit Amtrak and its passengers with the ability to stop and visit this amazing natural wonder and our historic and vibrant downtown. The opportunities do not end with Willamette Falls. The existing Amtrak stop in Oregon City is located across Washington Street from the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretative Center, a museum dedicated to telling the story of the pioneer experience. A steady flow of west coast tourists would assist art efforts in revitalizing this attraction. In addition, Oregon's fleet of historic trolleys could be scheduled to run from the train depot to the numerous other fascinating historic sites in Oregon City, including the Museum of the Oregon Territory overlooking Willamette Falls, the McLaughlin House National Historic Site, historic downtown Oregon City, including the Arch Bridge and Municipal Elevator, the McLaughlin and Kanema Historic Districts, and individual historic sites such as the Irma Tinger House, the Rose Farm and the Answorth House. Closed, please find a package of promotional materials regarding Oregon City. We hope that based on this submittal, you will agree that Oregon City merits a stop on the Coast Starlight. We look forward to greeting you. Sincerely, Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City. I wanted to thank David and staff for editing this and some folks that gave me some really good comments on it in response to my having sent this out in my constituent letter. So I'd feel like a copy of this after it's signed and mailed.
I'm going to recommend that it actually is a dual signature from the commission president and the mayor.
Yes. I won't turn you down on that.
Okay. There we go.
Executive session.
Executive session, and that is pursuant to...
Yeah. I was going to help you.
Now, this is pursuant to conduct deliberations of persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions.
Are we meeting here or in the back?
We'll re, in this case, we'll meet in the back room. The group will be small enough.